Good evening and Happy New Year. Welcome to the first council meeting for the year, Monday, January the 11th. First item on the agenda is the Pledge of Allegiance. If you could please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance and please remain standing for the invocation by Pastor Chris Hemelmann, First City Church.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening. It's a pleasure to be here. First City Church, we are a new church starting into this month and our name comes from the fact that Bellevue is the first city in Nebraska and it represents our desire to be here for the good of the city. So, to be able to do this is an honor and kind of a good way to start that off. So, thank you. Will you pray with me? Our gracious God, we pause this evening to humbly ask for wisdom and we know that you promise that for those who lack wisdom, you say to come and ask and you are generous with giving it. And so, we come as leaders in this community to ask for your wisdom. I pray that as decisions are made and discussions are had related to the running of a community, I pray that the principles of righteousness and justice would be upheld. We know that you honor these things. These are what you call leaders to uphold and so, I ask you would give much wisdom in the pursuit of that. May, through this council, may Bellevue be a city that thrives and flourishes. May it be a place of justice and equality. And so, I ask, Father, that you would impart the wisdom to these leaders necessary to make this city a more beautiful place, as the name says. We thank you for the opportunity to be a community that hosts so many of our military. We ask that we would be a blessing to them and we ask that you would bless them in their sacrifice. And so, all the things that are done here, may it be for the good of others. And we pray all these things in the name of Jesus. Amen.
Thank you, Pastor Hemelmann. Item number two, Sabrina, could you please call roll?
Mr. Carmichael?
Here.
Mr. Hanson?
Here.
Mr. Cook?
Here.
Mr. Preister?
Participating by a sky.
Mr. Modri?
Here.
Mrs. Blood?
Present.
Item two A, this meeting will be conducted according to the Open Meetings Act posted in the entry to the council chambers. Item three, approval of minutes and advisory committee report. Three A, approval of agenda. Councilwoman Blood.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Second by Mr. Cook. Any discussion? See none, please vote.
All voted yes.
Two. Three B, approval, consent agenda. Councilwoman Blood.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Second by Mr. Carmichael. Any discussion? Councilwoman Blood.
Yes, Mayor, I'd like to remove 12B from the consent agenda.
Do you need that second?
No.
Okay. Any other discussions? See none, please vote.
All voted yes.
Thank you. Item three D is under consent. Item four is under consent. Item five, special presentation. Roger Cox, Bellevue Police Department, Community Policing Coordinator.
Mayor, he could not make it this evening. If I could just have him make arrangements to come back another night.
Councilwoman Blood.
Mayor, I'd like to go ahead and make a motion on this.
So, that's your motion?
My motion is that I recommend that we approve this annual request for permission to solicit donations for the 216 community policing events and programs.
Thank you.
Second.
Second by Mr. Carmichael. Any discussion? See none, please vote.
All voted yes.
Thank you. Item six, liquor license. Six A, SPJ LLC Doing Business as Sorty Tavern, application for Class I liquor license to sell beer, wine, and distilled spirits on sale at 2871 Cape Heart Road Suite H and I and Stuart H Hayen as manager. Is anyone here from SPJ LLC? Please come forward. You could state your name and sign in, please.
My name is Stuart Hayen.
Is there anything you'd like to say about the approval of the liquor license?
I would like it approved.
Okay. What I'll do now is, go ahead and sign in. I'll open for public hearing on this item. Anyone wishing to speak on this item, please come forward at this time. Is there anyone? I see none. I'll close the public hearing. Councilwoman Blood.
Yes, Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we approve recommendation to the Nebraska Liquor Commission for this application for a Class I liquor license to sell beer, wine, and distilled spirits on sale only at 2871 Cape Heart Road Suites H and I and Stuart W Hayen as manager of SPJ LLC Doing Business as Sorty's Tavern.
Second.
Second by Mr. Cook. Any questions? Discussions? See none. Mr. Modri?
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, I'll be abstaining from voting on agenda items six A through six C for religious and personal reasons.
Any other discussion? Mr. Cook.
Thank you, thank you, Mayor. Mr. Hayen, are the kitchen, is that going to be open or on the road?
Eventually it will.
Actually?
Right now, it's not.
And you are the new owner?
Yes.
Good, thank you.
Fifty percent, the wife's fifty percent.
Sure that's not forty-nine, fifty-one?
Unfortunately, you're probably true, but paper says fifty.
Thank you.
Please vote.
All voted yes, one abstention.
Thank you.
All voted yes, one abstention.
Thank you. And six A, one approval of SPJ LLC Doing Business Sorties Tavern as a Kino satellite. Do you need a separate motion on that?
Yes.
No.
Councilwoman Blood.
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to approve the request for SPJ LLC DBA Sorties Tavern as a Kino satellite.
Second.
Second by Mr. Cook. Any discussion? See none, please vote.
All voted yes, one abstention.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item six B, Gross Catholic High School, application for special designated liquor license to sell beer, wine, beer, wine during a fundraiser on February the 13th from 6:00 PM to 11:59 PM at 7700 South 43rd Street.
Thank you, yeah. My name is Tim Yawk. I'm representing Gross Catholic High School as we try to get a special liquor license for this fundraiser that we've done for, it's our ninth year that we've done it and you've supported it every year that we have, we've had it. All participants are 21 years and older at this particular function and it helps fund three activities, programs that are in our school. So, we're hoping to get your support.
Thank you. I'll open for public hearing on this item. Anyone wishing to speak on this item, please do so at this time. See none, I'll close the public hearing. Councilwoman Blood.
Yes, Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we approve recommendation to the Nebraska Liquor Commission for Gross High Schools, application for special designated liquor license to sell beer during a fundraiser on February 13th, 2016 from 6:00 PM to 11:59 PM at 7700 South 43rd Street.
Second.
Second by Mr. Carmichael. Any discussion? See none, please vote.
All voted yes, one abstention.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Six C, Knights of Columbus, 11879 St. Matthews, application for special designated liquor license to sell beer, wine during Lenten sees fish fry at St. Matthews Parish, 11210 South 36th from 4:30 PM to 7:30 PM on six consecutive Friday nights from February the 12th through March 18th.
Mayor Sanders, City Council members, good evening. My name is Pat Brennan. I'm the Deputy Grand Knight of the Knights of Columbus Council, 11879, here in Bellevue. Our council is requesting six liquor licenses to support our annual fish fry season, which begins Friday, February 12th and follows every Friday through March 18th. Council Number 11879 appreciates your attention to this matter as the fish fries are the basis for our yearly budget, with most of the funds going right back into the Bellevue community through charities and activities that we support. We've held fish fries since 1996 without incident and will once again be very diligent in following the laws and guidelines sent forth by the State of Nebraska and the city of Bellevue concerning the sale and consumption of alcoholic beverages during our events. Again, I thank you for your time and consideration on this matter and I'm prepared to answer any questions that you may have at this time.
Thank you. I'll go ahead and open public hearing on this item. Anyone wishing to speak on this item, please do so at this time. See none, I'll close the public hearing. Councilwoman Blood.
Yes, Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we approve recommendation to the Nebraska Liquor Commission for the Knights of Columbus Council, 11879, also known as St. Matthews, for their application for special designated liquor license to sell beer and wine during Lenten fish fries at St. Matthews Parish, 11210 South 36th Street from 4:30 PM to 7:30 PM on six consecutive Friday nights from February 12th, 2016 through March 18th, 2016.
Second.
Second by Mr. Cook. Any discussion? See none, please vote.
All voted yes, one abstention.
Thank you and good luck.
Thank you.
Item number seven, ordinance for adoption, third reading. Seven A, ordinance 3830. Sabrina, please read the ordinance.
Ordinance Number 3830, an ordinance declaring the necessity, expediency, and propriety of vacating all of Emmeline Street, formerly known as Union Street, lying west of the easterly right-of-way line of abandoned Rock Island Railroad and lying east of the westerly right-of-way line of abandoned Rock Island Railroad, together with all of the north-south alley and all of the east-west alley in Block 1, Candace and Lewis First Edition to Albright Annex, together with vacating all of Gertrude Street, formerly known as Hadfield Street, lying west of the easterly right-of-way line of abandoned Rock Island Railroad and lying east of the westerly right-of-way line of abandoned Rock Island Railroad, and all of the north-south alley and all the east-west alley in Block 2, Candace and Lewis First Edition to Albright Annex, lying east of the easterly right-of-way line of abandoned Rock Island Railroad and lying east of the westerly right-of-way line of abandoned Rock Island Railroad, all located in the northeast quarter of Section 16 Township 14 North, Range 13 East of the Sixth Prime Meridian, Sarpy County, Nebraska. Not here to fore vacated, repealing all ordinances and all parts of ordinances in conflict herewith and designating an effective date.
Thank you. What are the wishes of Councilwoman, Councilwoman, Councilman Cook?
Thank you, Mayor. I'll make a motion to approve ordinance Number 3830.
Second.
Second by Councilwoman Blood. Any discussion? See none, please vote.
All voted yes.
Thank you. Item eight, ordinance for public hearing, second reading. Eight A, ordinance Number 3834. Sabrina, please read the ordinance.
Ordinance Number 3834, an ordinance to annex to the city of Bellevue, Sarpy County, Nebraska, certain lands, lots, and real estate lying within the below described boundaries and designating an effective date.
Thank you. Now open for public hearing, public hearing on this item. Anyone wish to speak on this item, please do so at this time.
Good evening, Council. My name is David Llewellyn. I'm the owner of this said property.
Welcome.
And I come before you to see if I can get these two parcels, one and two, annexed into the city limits.
Okay. Any questions from the council? Councilwoman Blood.
Just want to clarify that you know that once annexed, that you'll be privy to taxing by the city of Bellevue. So, make sure you need that.
Not crazy about that, but I understand.
Well, we kind of want your money, so, all right. Just making sure.
Thank you. I'll now ask for the public if there's anyone here that would like to speak on this ordinance. Please do so at this time. See none, I'll close the public hearing. The third and final reading will be January the 25th.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Item eight to be, ordinance 3835. Sabrina, please read the ordinance.
Ordinance Number 3835, an ordinance to amend the official zoning map of the city of Bellevue, Nebraska, as provided for by Article 3 of ordinance Number 3619, by changing the zone classification of land located at or about 36th Street and Sheridan Road, more particularly described in Section 1 of the ordinance and to provide an effective date.
Thank you. I'll now open for public hearing on this item.
I'm back.
Welcome back. You don't need to sign in again.
Good.
Yep.
Yeah, so I'm here this time to get the zoning approved of the three lots, one through three.
Thank you. So, again, I'll ask if there's anyone else that would like to speak at this time, please do so. Mr. Cook, do you have a question?
Thank you, Mayor. Chris, I noticed that two of these lots have homes on it, the third one does not. What is the, like, an exit point? What is your in and out for that one lot?
When this area was planted previously, there was an access easement going up to Sheridan Road, kind of behind his new house.
Okay. And that's still there and would be the exit?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
There are others that would like to speak on this? See none, I'll close the public hearing. The third and final reading would be also January the 25th.
Thank you, Council.
Thank you. Item eight C, ordinance 3836. Sabrina, please read the ordinance.
Ordinance Number 3836, an ordinance to amend the official zoning map of the city of Bellevue, Nebraska, as provided for by Article 3 of ordinance Number 3619, by changing the zone classification of land located at or about Trigarian Drive and Pilgrim Drive, more particularly described in Section 1 of the ordinance and to provide an effective date.
Thank you. I'll now open for public hearing on this item. Welcome.
Good evening. Brian Doyle, on behalf of the applicant, and also with me today is John Coolidge from Lampard Neerson Associates, the project engineer for the project. We're here asking for rezoning approximately 50 acres into 144 single-family lots. If you have any questions, we're available to answer them.
Thank you. Are there others that would like to speak on this item? Please do so at this time.
Good evening, Mayor, council members. So, that is from the Trigarian residents. They also have concerns from Pilgrim and Fairview South and the Trigarians. School size, I don't know exactly which school they'll go to and I don't know if anyone could answer that question. Between Two Springs and Fairview, most likely Fairview is just down the road. But I just was wondering if the principals were aware of the increased student load, hopefully, and if that has not been thought of, I certainly can request your consideration for that. The $42,000 that will be collected and contributed to the City Park Fund, just residents had questions on how that will be collected and who is responsible for that $42,000. My guess is the builder will pay that and of course, that'll be handed off to the lots at $291 bucks a lot about. So, we'll see how that flows out, but I did have questions on that from my residents. And, let's see, finally, the park. That is a fantastic addition and like I said, this plan has been very well thought out. We're just concerned about the upkeep of the costs and if that's going to go to the CID itself, which I assume, once again, the CID will take care of that in the future and then annexed city. So, that's probably what the park fund is for. And then, one last big input from one of my residents today was, with the new collector streets, if they could join them at the south end to have another exit hook up to Colonial Point exit, that would be four exits and I think that may be a viable solution for the exodus during the mornings. I'm talking to Ms. Palm earlier today. It's not under our jurisdiction, it's under the state as far as the Fort Crook in Fairview. They're going to be hopefully providing some exits down there too, in the form of a diamond. That, when I mentioned that to the residents, alleviated a lot of their concerns that that was going to be taken care of, hopefully, this year. So, lots of stuff going on in this one. I'm not 100% sure that my residents will be satisfied, no matter how we answer this question. But I do hope that maybe some additional research can be done by the planning commission. I know it's already here, but we missed the planning commission meeting due to Thanksgiving.
Mr. Shuchuk, would you like to address a few of those points, please?
The park development fund fee is paid upfront by the SID for the plats filed, so that's not done by each developer. Traffic, the county, Fairview Road is a county road. They are well aware of the traffic situation, they're aware of a, or they're anticipating a future need for a stoplight at Fairview or at Trigarian in Fairview when the traffic warrants it. There are, there has to be certain numbers of traffic, vehicles per day to warrant a traffic signal. The county is aware of that and they would be monitoring that. School traffic, it's just, I'm sorry, you know, I hate to say this, it's just one of those things from, you know, 7:45 to 8 o'clock in the morning and 2:45 to 3 o'clock in the afternoon, it happens at every school. And I don't have a, really, an answer for you to that, other than, you know, it happens everywhere. I live, you know, Paul, you know, I live six houses from the school. I know there are traffic signals, traffic issues every day. School district, school superintendent does get a copy of the plat, every plat that we do. They have a chance to comment on it. He typically sends back no comments, but if he does, they would be incorporated into the report. Future traffic, when Haida Hills develops and other areas down there, we would have another exit from that area coming out through the Colonial Point. The Fairview-Fort Crook intersection, according to the Department of Roads, they are going to be starting that construction this spring. It'll take about a year. That'll be the Fairview Road interchange and also the new Highway 34-Platteville Road interchange further to the south. So, that whole project should be done early next year, a year after they start construction.
Okay. And will these be going simultaneously, so that exit will be kind of next from us while they're building the houses too, do you know?
Those, no, they will have, the Department of Roads project is separate from the housing development.
True, but will the houser, or the housing development be going in at the same time, you know, so increase traffic? I don't know when they'll start building.
You know, obviously, they have to go through a final plat process. I would, and the engineer, they probably will not restart actually building homes until early next year. Or maybe starting some late this year. So, okay, so they might start and maybe get some foundations in at the end of this year if they get all their infrastructure in. So, no people until, you know, a year from now, early '17. And then, hopefully, the Highway 75-Fareview Road interchange improvements will be done by then.
I just wanted to present our concerns from the Trigarian Homeowners Association and continued vigilance on that intersection for traffic coming. Thank you very much.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
Oh, I better sign.
Are there others that would like to speak on ordinance 3836? Please do so at this time.
Thank you.
I'll go ahead and close the public hearing on 3836. Mr. Cook.
Thank you, Mayor. Chris, a couple of questions for me. I noticed in the paperwork we got where the subdivision would contribute to traffic light signals on Fairview at 22nd and Fairview and at Trigarian in Fairview. Is there a percentage that has been established?
The, when that happens, the county would divvy it up, the cost between the, and the entities that have to pay for it. You know, there may be new, you know, additional entities that would contribute at that time. So, no, at this time, there is not.
I noticed that there's, there's outlots, several of them, and one of it says that there'll be a trail through outlots A to C, but there's outlots A, B, C, D, E, F. And I was just wondering why so many outlots? And my concern is, is someday when that's annexed, you know, they fall upon the city to maintain and take care of. You know the reason why there are so many outlots? Is it ditches, ravines?
They're generally drainage ways or areas for water retention.
I'm John Coolidge with Lampard Neerson Associates, civil engineer for the project. And we found now with permanent water quality treatment, the, what used to be temporary basins stay forever in the subdivision. So, we'd like to limit those to their own specific outlot so that they can be maintained as part of that outlot, whereas if you have the whole drainage way, maybe that's the homeowners association or something's responsibility to maintain. But this, the smaller outlots that just contain these water quality basins, then we can establish continuing maintenance of those more easily.
I'm not quite following you. Why so many?
Well, there's four water quality basins at Outlet A, F, C, and there's three drainage way basins.
I guess my concern would be, is it because of the lay of the land, that's it?
Right. There's a huge, there's a, there's a large existing drainage way at the, at the bottom of the, of the site. And then, there's an existing, some wetlands, Outlet E, that we were unable to build upon because the core and the existing wetlands. So, the, the big outlot in the middle is an existing wetlands and we couldn't get in there to build.
And part of my concern is with six outlots, when we annex, then they become ours and...
Believe me, the owner would love to pave those and build homes on them rather than, than leave them at outlots, but it was the only way that, that we could get the core to accept the permit and working with them.
Thank you. Also, Andy, I'm sorry, I forgot your last name. I did get, I did through emails communicate with the Sheriff's Department and they're very well aware of the issue with the traffic at that school. They probably have someone there almost every morning, would be my guess, and evening. One of the things that works a little bit to our advantage is that tomorrow, there's not going to be 144 new homes built. So, hopefully, as this progresses and as new homes are built, maybe the other land to the south and to the east of that will be developed where we can have some more connector roads. But I agree, that is a nightmare up there. You know, it's unfortunate that, you know, we approve housing developments and then the sheriff, it's their roads and then they got to deal with the traffic issues with it, but I'm sure they'll do a very well job. Also, I communicated through email with the superintendent of Bellevue Public Schools. I received an email from a lady who is concerned that she already has a child in Fairview School and she's hearing rumors that maybe a younger sibling, by the time they were going to go to school, would not be able to go to that school. And I apologize for not recalling exactly the response from the superintendent, but what I recall was, it's not an issue. It will be an issue someday because all that's going to get developed and I don't know the exact boundaries and where Fairview-Springfield schools are and how that all breaks down. But what I can recall was that school's fine and they can accept more kids. And I know that there are some Bellevue Public Schools that are not completely full and I would think that the Bellevue Public School Board would possibly looking at maybe readjusting boundaries in other parts and, and, you know, maybe, I'm speculating, I don't have firsthand knowledge, but I'm going to guess that you'll be okay with Fairview, at least in the short term, but as more development comes, it may become an issue. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Mr. Sullivan.
I just wanted to follow up a little bit in regard to these outlots. And I've looked at the plat, there's, in this environment, those outlots are not unusual. We now have this requirement of these retention basins, which I, I call mosquito bays, that we're going to have all over in all of our new developments now because we have to hold back half inch of water beyond what the previous conditions were. So, as we move forward and we keep making these requirements or demands, you somewhat need to be careful what you wish for. It makes it a longer duration before the city's able to annex these SIDs because of the additional costs. Also becomes additional costs once we are able to annex those. But those, those outlots aren't anything out of the unusual in today's planning environment with respect to stormwater runoff.
Mr. Carmichael.
Thank you, Mayor.
I guess maybe Chris or Pat on this one. In relation to these retention basins, one of the problems that we've, we run into continually with them is siltation. And whose responsibility it is to maintain those at the elevation of the engineer designs and at what frequency? And then furthermore, will it be the responsibility of the CID long-term to maintain those even if they're annexed? Or will that become a function of the city as we move through this process of building, ultimately to annexation?
The retention basins and where they're supposed to keep their silt levels, it's typically to be managed, if you will, by the engineers for the district. And they'll make recommendations as to when that silt's to be cleared out. The SID will then clear that silt out, assuming they have funds to do so. Additionally, once that area is annexed, it's just as though the SID was a smaller corporation that got merged into a bigger corporation. All those responsibilities then fall on the city.
Mr. Shuchek, do you have anything more to add? Thank you. Mr. Hanson.
Thanks. And Pat, maybe you, I, I know that when Hyda Hills was developed, part of Hyda Hills was in Springfield District and part of Hyda Hills was in Bellevue District, as it went that way. Is this, all this ground in the Bellevue School District?
This, this development is in the Bellevue School District.
The third and final reading on this item will be January the twenty-fifth. Item eight D, ordinance three eight, three seven. Sabrina, please read the ordinance.
Ordinance number three eight, three seven. An ordinance to amend the official zoning map of the city of Bellevue, Nebraska, as provided for by Article three of ordinance number three six, one nine, by changing the zone classification of land located at or about Forty-third Street and Cape Heart Road, more particularly described in Section one of the ordinance and to provide an effective date.
Thank you. I'll now open for public hearing on this item. Welcome.
Well, Madam Mayor, members of the council. Doug Dresen, one oh eight, three six, Old Mill Road, appearing on behalf of the applicant, Regency Homes. The SID attorney and the applicant are here as well to answer any questions you may have. This is a two hundred and ninety-two lot, single-family development located north of Cape Heart Road, about Forty-Fifth Street, just west of the Veterans Home and the Large Park. We're a little bit west of the existing substation down there. We'll have three outlots in this development. Like the prior case, those are used for stormwater detention and water quality features. They're, they're numbered B through D to avoid confusion with Outlot A from the Daniel Farm subdivision that's located directly west of us. And with that, we'd be here, we'd be happy to answer any questions you may have regarding the subdivision. Thank you.
Any questions from the council? I'll go ahead and open for public hearing.
Good evening, City Council and Mayor. My name is Tom Bellinger. I live at one two zero zero six Quail Drive. I'm representing the Quail Creek Neighborhood Association. Four years ago, our community came together with this city council. Not all of you were on it, but many, some of you were. And we established Outlot B on the Daniels Farm addition along the northern edge of that space. That outlot was created not as a barrier between neighborhoods, but as a green space to connect designated green spaces from the west, being Outlot A, as mentioned previously, and the east, being the future park space. Not only was it created to connect green spaces, but also as a wildlife corridor to protect the, protect the existing wildlife our community has come to appreciate and enjoy. It was a moment that made us proud as a community to have partnered with city officials to create a positive change and have our voices heard and to be able to continue to see that wildlife migrate along that space. A few months ago, many of our, many in our community were disappointed to learn that the sale of the property to our south, Outlot B, was sold and no restrictions were included in the sale, sale to keep that green space in there. After discussions with the developer and the city planning department, we were not able to come to any compromise to restore Outlot B or anything similar to it. Today, I present to you a petition of our Quail Creek residents, and I'll provide this to the, the city clerk after, after I speak, asking for their digital signature in support of an amendment to create a new outlot. This petition asked if they would be in support of a new twenty-five to thirty-five foot wildlife corridor along the northern stretch of the new Liberty Development between Outlot A and the future park space to the east. This outlot would be no, no more than two acres in, in size and would be primarily wooded by existing trees and shrubs that are in that space today. It would be a natural space that would allow the deer, turkey, and other wildlife to continue to migrate along that existing, existing migration path undisturbed. This outlot would not intend to prevent streets from being connected by including easements to allow Quail Drive and Daniel Road to still be connected through. The petition asked only for residents who would be eligible to vote to sign, to sign the petition and weren't supportive of the amendment to the, of the, to the condition of sale. In total, we have received eighty-six responses representing ninety-one voters. Of those signatures, fifty homes are represented. It's a perception that only those that live along this proposed corridor want this green space. This petition shows otherwise. Residents throughout our neighborhood are in support of this. Today, I ask you to please listen to our residents and make a small change to this plan that would have minimal costs and be a big commitment to the future by reintroducing an outlot to this plan. On a personal note, I live on Quail Drive, which will be connected to the south, and we fully anticipate that there's going to be additional traffic there. At the city planning commission, it was suggested that we consider adding additional traffic measures along Quail Drive because there are traffic controlling measures within the new Liberty Plan and there's not another stop sign all the way in through Quail Creek, all the way until you get to the bottom of the main hill in Quail Creek. I have a six-year-old and I live right along that street. I would love to see some thought put into this and be proactive about it instead of being reactive and wait till somebody gets hurt and see people move unrestricted all the way from the center of the Liberty Plan down to that Quail Creek, down to the bottom of Quail Drive. So that's my personal side of things outside of the petition. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bellinger. Are there others?
Okay. My name's John Kuser. Lived in Bellevue for fifty-six years. Longtime Quail Creek resident for twenty-seven years. I live on the far south side of Quail Creek. I have two issues I'd like to bring up, but I don't know what our time limit is. I don't want to take a very long time. If it's three minutes, I probably can't do it in three minutes. But one is an emotional issue. One may be something we have to look at on a legal basis. First of all, definition, agreement. An agreement is a course of action and understanding. Understanding, ability to understand something sympathetic and aware of others' feelings. Trust, to have confidence, depend on, to believe, to rely on, to expect confidently. The obligation of someone in a responsible position. Three years ago, your neighbors in Quail Creek felt we had an agreement and understanding with the city of Bellevue through a vote of the city council regarding this green space corridor of the Daniels property. Based upon that vote, we put our trust in you. That's how it works. Couple of months ago, I spoke at a meeting we had with the developer. And I would just like to say, the, the developer, the people that we're dealing with, very accommodating, very nice people. Really don't have the issues. Issues are issues. I know this is business for them. This is probably more emotional for us. I had an opportunity to speak at that meeting and said, in reference to this green corridor, we had an opportunity. It was an opportunity to be good neighbors. To take an opportunity to look at and hopefully look at a situation and see if we could accommodate. There was not one dissenting vote to build this development. We could work as neighbors, the developer, the city, and Quail Creek. This corridor isn't extensive, basically about a hundred feet wide by about fifteen to eighteen hundred feet long. If you look at the map that you're using, it's, it's the width of a pencil on that map is what we're talking about. Could it be fifty feet wide? Yes. Could it be thirty feet wide? Yes. The residents of Quail Creek have been good neighbors to the city of Bellevue. Let me give you an example. When Quail Creek was annexed several years ago, the city came in and took a look at what the responsibilities were. The Quail Creek neighborhood has twenty-one circles and median islands. After annexation, the city was approached to see if some funding was available to maintain the beautiful landscaping that was there for almost forty years. We were told no funding was available and a possible solution was to concrete over the islands and the medians. I don't know how that makes Bellevue more beautiful. We spent our own money. We adopted the islands. We do the maintenance. I'm one of the youngest workers. I'm sixty-two. We are good neighbors. At the same meeting, a gentleman from the city gave a history of the lots and where we stand today. During his talk, he described Lot B as a road to nowhere. I'd like to show you a short video. It's only about ten or fifteen seconds. This is my backyard. The first picture you saw was a young deer that, four years ago, comes and spins. Time there. Two years ago, this is what she came along with. I have one more, ten second one. Last one. Her first year, she came with twins. Her third year, she came with these guys, the triplets. Last year, we had twins again. She comes every year. Thank you. Lastly, I do have one issue with the city, city planning report that you folks received. It's City Bellevue Planning Department Recommendation Report number one. And in, I guess on the third page, right above letter F, it says, "The existing outlot, meaning B, will not serve as a connection to future park ground as once thought. Staff is not in favor of keeping the buffer between these neighborhoods. If the outlot remains undeveloped, it will be difficult to maintain and would not allow street connection." Planning Commission. Good planning practice includes connectivity between neighborhoods. I've lived there for twenty-seven years. The total cost to maintain that is zero. Zero. Just like we're good neighborhoods, we have a couple of people that keep that. There is no cost to that outlot. So, you know, life's short. We don't have a lot of things. This little buffer to have this, I think would be good for the developer. Think it'd be good for Quail Creek. You think it'd be good for the city of Bellevue? That's my emotional issue. I have a possible legal issue, but I don't want to take too much of the time. I can come back to the next meeting and talk about that one. It's up to you folks.
Mr. Kuser, tonight's the public hearing, so go ahead.
This issue is somewhat unique to me and my lot where I live, only because a structure was built there. I moved to Quail Creek about twenty-seven years ago. At the time, I did everything I could to have at the house and everything, sold all my cars, did everything, lived in the basement with my folks for six months when my house was being built. During that process, I was called to the house and was shown a structure, which was basically, I don't know if I use the correct word, a concrete inlet that was not visible at the time because of all the foliage and everything was there. Anyway, this concrete inlet was there. It was, it was there for a reason. I was told to probably walk away from it because it wasn't on any plotted, plot plan or anything else. Basically, what it was is, is to capture water runoff from the farm field behind me Daniels. So you make decisions? I said, "Well, let's see what we can do. Let's move forward." They were putting the roof on my house. So the first spring came, they came and they put my yard down. The first spring storm came and my backyard was no longer there after the spring, after this, after the rain. It was in the lot next to me and that's because the, the water runoff wasn't that inlet wasn't able to control it. A hydrologist came over and made the statement that he thought this might be good to bring some school kids because this is how the Grand Canyon was built, from the water. His attempt at humor. Anyway, we, we move along, they try regrading, they do it. There was no solution. At this point in time, contacted the NRD. They came over. We had a conversation with the farmer. We had a conversation with NRD. We had a conversation with the SID. The solution was to build a berm. This berm was built. Basically, the hydrologist engineer came and said, "This is basically the only solution that we have here." The farmer agreed to it. I put money into it. The NRD had some money to put into. I put money into it, the NRD had some money to put into it, the SID had money to put into it. The agreement was, I had to maintain it, which I have for twenty-six years. I also had to pay compensation for, it was supposedly an acre that was taken out, it was nothing but about maybe a thousand square feet, but I paid the compensation for that berm to be built and maintained for this period of time. There was a reciprocal covenant that was for this structure made. It works. There is, I've been there twenty-seven years, we've had zero basic maintenance. I maintained the berm, but as far as any sediment and those type of troubles, it doesn't Basically, that reciprocal agreement indicates that I, to maintain it and cannot do anything with it, the farmer is to allow it to be there, and if property is sold, the covenant follows and that this structure should be maintained there. I think it should be maintained there, would like it to be maintained there. So, that's the possible legal issue with that. The developers, we have talked, they've sent an engineer over, they're willing, and I am willing, to talk about a compromise or possible solution. I just don't want to be here or utilize and have to have some type of legal action at a later date if people walk away from it and say, "No, we're not going to consider it or look at it." I think it could be resolved, I feel confident it could be resolved. I just don't know how you protect yourself with that. One last, one last, one last point is, you saw the picture of the one deer, that was her, her first year. A friend of mine had her three-year-old granddaughter over, and I said, "Oh, come here," because she always used to come, and I says, "Look at what's out back." I says, "Isn't she sweet?" The next year, she came by, she was four, and she looked out there, well, my deer had her twins there, she was laying down the back, just like she was laying down there. And the little four-year-old goes, "Oh, they're sweetie." And I says, "Well, why did you say that? Well, you said the first time you saw her, isn't that sweet?" So, sweetie's there every year. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, I'm Martin Barch, 4501 Anker Mill Road. I appreciate the opportunity to speak tonight. I had sent a document via email, Carol's nodding her head, she got it, she responded to it. Paul Cook, I've sent you a copy, did you get it?
Yes.
Okay, Paul Cook got it. I apologize, I got here a little late, so if there was any discussion, I missed it. But basically, since I write a lot better than I talk, which isn't a lot, saying a lot, I'm not going to go over this, but I give it to you all as a perspective of what has happened in a nutshell since 2012 to present. What I'd like to do is just basically make two points. One, we're talking about a strip of land that is, has been not cultivated, uncultivated, has been natural. Since I moved in back in ninety-five, there are neighbors of mine who have said that since they've been there a lot longer than I have, this strip of land had not been cultivated. So, when we envisioned development on that side, basically, we envisioned houses and backyards and streets and everything else taking over the cultivated area, but that strip of natural green space would stay. That's our ultimate goal, I believe. As Tom had said, you know, we can do this, or it can be done via zoning. Any more based upon what I've learned in going through all of the documents, which were nice enough to be provided to me by Sabrina on a thumb drive. I don't know that zoning is the way to go, it is a way to go. If we don't go the zoning route, then I request that somehow the Neighborhood Association and our representatives have visibility into the agreement being struck with the developer. Bottom line, I read it from my little diatribe that I emailed, "Both Quail Creek Neighborhood Association and Representatives of Liberty Land LLC have expressed willingness to compromise. It's time to establish this compromise and to formally incorporate legally binding compromise wording into our agreement." So, I ask that we either go ahead and zone something, or if it's not going to be zoned, please work with us, or have the Planning Commission work with us so that we can get appropriate wording into the sales agreement that allows us to put a natural strip down there. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Barch. Are there others?
Well, good evening, I'm Denny Van Morleghen with Liberty Land. Word keeps coming up all night long, liberty, liberty, liberty. We do have a heart, we do understand, John, about those deer, okay? We've got grandkids and they love them too. Tom, we've talked at your meeting, you know, and a couple of times after. They've got good, sincere people who care about their neighborhood and care about their areas and their community. We have been in council with some of the council members and with our engineers, and although this might not be the compromise that the homeowners would like, we would offer to put a buffer strip between subdivisions on our land. We populate it with trees. It would provide a buffer between the homeowners and the new subdivisions, the backyards. They would have a different look out their back window than a cornfield, but they would have more of a natural look. And it would provide somewhat of a hedgerow, like when we're hunting with kids, for those animals to travel back and forth, some protection. Okay, the trees would have to mature. And we'd be willing to do that anytime it makes sense, which is on most of those lots where Lot B was. In some cases, the grades might not allow that, okay? So, I mean, we can do that, we'd do that, we'd put that in writing, okay, and come up with some plan. I don't know anything else that we can do short of starting over, so.
Councilman Blod.
I just want to thank you from the very beginning, I am one of the council people, just so there's no confusion, that asked for that initial green space. We really didn't look at it as a corridor for animals at the time, and Councilman Preister may want to chime in, but I went through my notes and it really, in my notes, said it was about connectivity. Councilman Preister and I and Councilman Sandborn were on a committee that had to do with developing that area that pertained to new homes, some commercial parks, and connectivity is key when you have neighborhoods side by side like that, especially when you have amenities like parks. That, as they already mentioned, that plan had changed, but wanting to serve that area wasn't a feeling that had changed for me. And I went to the meeting that you had with the homeowners, I can sincerely say, as I've been on the council since 2008, I have never seen a developer that has been so patient and open-minded and willing to work with a neighborhood. And then again, I have no idea how I'm going to vote when it comes around to the next reading, but I am going to say that I appreciate the fact that you did this because I know you don't have to do this. I appreciate the fact that you want to bring open-end housing into Bellevue because that is something that we're severely lacking. We're always asked why we don't have a Shadow Lake. That's one of the reasons we don't have a Shadow Lake, because we didn't have the amount of open-end housing that's required for a community to bring in amenities like big shopping malls. And so, hopefully, this is the beginning of something really good for Bellevue. So, I wanted to say thank you, and I wanted to make sure that there's no confusion about which council people were responsible for that, because I know Paul Cook was going to ask anyway. And again, just tell you thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Hanson.
Thank you. Just a couple of questions. I noticed your zoning, you're going to go to RS, from RS seventy-two and A Ag to RS seventy-two planned urban development. And as I look at that, and I look at the pictures of the houses that you're talking about building there, I notice that you're looking only at five-foot side yard on these houses, so it's ten feet between, you know, RS seventy-two, I think is minimum seven.
Seven.
So, is your plan to build this type of homes with a five-foot side yard on these lots?
Typically, in most subdivisions in the area, except for Papillion, it's five-foot side yards. That's what we're used to building.
A lot of Papillion is ten-foot.
It's all ten.
Ten, right. Second question is, this ground that, this purchase is all in Springfield School District at this time, is that correct?
Yes, it is.
Okay. And last question is, and I think this purchase agreement was written before I was on the council, have you, is this, have your group, have you closed on this property yet, or is it still pending?
There's some title issues that you're going to work out later tonight. We're ready to close anytime the city is.
All right.
But let me back up a little bit, okay? The five-foot side yards versus seven are intent, most of our, now, these houses are going to be two-eighty to four-fifty, okay? So, they're going to be bigger houses. We kind of want to match the streetscape of Lakewood Villages or Clearwater Falls, and you'll notice in there, it's mostly three-car garages, okay? Some people say these greeter developers want all these lots, but it's really not true. We want a streetscape that will work, and the goal goes back to affordability. With our costs going up, if we can do what we have to do with a little bit in a cheaper lot, the people can put more money in their houses. So, the reason for the five-foot side yard variance is to get three-car garages on those lots. And now, they won't all be three cars, okay, but that's what most of our buyers prefer. So, Regency Homes and Sherwood Lane Homes and Horizon Homes have all agreed that if we, most of the lots in there are seventy feet, and we all have plans that'll work on a sixty-foot building frontage. So, that's the reason for that, okay?
My only comment is that as you look at a subdivision when it's completed, when it's done, and you go to some of the ones in Papillion, and you look at the same builders, and you got ten-foot on the side yards, and then you look at some of the developments that have been in Bellevue with five feet, you can barely pass your person, if you're mowing, you've got to wait till the other person goes by to mow. So, you know, I'm just, that's, you know, that's pretty close when you got ten foot between a house, so.
Our development costs, the average during the, before the housing slowdown, okay, the old generation lots averaged about thirty thousand dollars. These lots are going to be fifty to sixty, and that's going to push a lot of buyers out of the price points. We're already losing buyers to the existing market. So, as we go down this process, we have to look down the road at affordability. These houses are still going to be two-eighty to four-fifty, okay? The side yard requirement from a construction perspective is difficult sometimes, okay?
I'm not questioning your marketing ability to go ahead and sell these homes, but when I look at the location of where they are, and if it's in the Springfield School District, and I'm looking for houses for two-fifty to two-eighty in that area, it just doesn't, I don't, I mean, maybe there's a market there, I don't know, but.
School district's a big issue, you know that, John. It's the biggest issue we're fighting. We've been working for two years with the legislature, and so they're getting closer to closer, making that work, okay?
Mr. Cook.
Thank you, Mayor. I had a few questions. Denny, you mentioned about creating a buffer strip. There's people in here probably would like to hear more about it. Are we talking about eighteen hundred feet and how wide, or?
Oh, the buffer strip. No, I'm talking about a hedgerow with the trees. The trees would go into the backyards of our neighbors, of our homeowners, okay? And they would be five or ten-foot off the back property line, and they'd be staggered to some degree to give a hedgerow effect, okay?
But they would be in?
They would be on the homeowners, they would be in the Liberty subdivision homeowners' backyards.
There could be fences and sheds and?
Not sheds. That ain't going to happen.
Okay. I guess part of my, when I look at this, part of my concern was is that we're, we have plans to build a regional park, I don't know when we'll be able to get that done, but we have tried to connect these neighborhoods, and we're going through a process now with two springs and trying to get them all the way down to about, it'd probably be like twentieth and Capeport Road to the trail with the Papio Creek. And we've gone through a process where Bellevue, Sarpy County, NRD, and some SIDS have contributed, and we've put about a four-hundred dollar total value on that, and our bid came in about double that. I don't know if we'll ever get it down, I don't know if we'll ever get this trail built. But what I remember as far as this whole property with all the ditches and ravines of a significant trail for people to walk on, I know we got people talking about an ami, ami, I can't even say the word, animal trail, but to me, I'm surprised that we don't have some type of a trail through your neighborhood.
We talked about that in length. There's about eight or ten acres on one of these plats up front, and that's Daniel's farm out Lot A, okay? And that is going to be owned and maintained ultimately by the homeowners association, not by the public.
Through, definite till eternity? It will be written in the subdivision?
It already is.
Okay.
The SID hopefully will build it, put some trails in there if we can afford it, and then before annexation, the association will own it, because the city of Bellevue doesn't want to maintain all of that, and I understand that. So, that is a private park, that is a private area for the homeowners in Liberty. And so, and then there's the strip of ground at the hundred feet, which was intended to be a people and a animal corridor. Well, there's nothing on the west side of it to go to. The animals will, but not the people, okay? And then on the other side, Paul, on the east side of it, then because of the deep drainage ditch, that forty-foot ditch that's down in the lowland, okay, we were asked, and we are going to build a cul-de-sac in there, okay? Because it's of no use for a city park, there's no access to it, you couldn't get to it at all. So, that strip of ground was, from end to end, has no place to go. Animals will find their way through it, but animals will find their way through backyards, you know? So, at least if they've got some trees and some habitat, okay, they'll feel safer, I guess.
I guess part of my concern is, is that when this was agreed upon by the city council, I mean, it was, it was, you know, a motion and a vote. It's probably not real common to set something aside like this. And I understand the idea of trying to get people moved maybe to a park or through a neighborhood to a park, and we eliminated that park, and now, you know, this buffer, there is a request to still have it there. And I guess from my standpoint, my, part of my concerns is that down the road, unless it's written in the subdivision agreement for maintenance, or something would be agreed upon with Quail Creek, you know, if there was a buffer there, I know there's been a request down to twenty-five or thirty-foot, but if there was a buffer there, you know, who would maintain it? I understand the Sid, if it was there, the Sid would do until it was annexed, and then when it becomes annexed, if there's any buffer there and it's just for animals, you know, the little trees are going to be big trees, and they're going to fall in people's backyards, and then they're going to look at the city to come and take care of it. Right now, if I understand, Mr. Bellinger, you guys are asking for, the Neighborhood Association is asking for about a twenty-five to thirty-five foot thing, but it would have to be beyond what is designated for Lot B. It'd have to go about, I don't know where Tom's at.
Yeah, but we're also asking for, we're asking for it to be extended to the east, where it would be.
Right.
We're also asking for it to be narrowed as well, so that it doesn't take as much out of those backyards that would be along that stage.
Right. So, I guess my concern is, is, is there a compromise here? I don't know by putting trees and hedges in the backyard is going to accomplish what they want as far as then people start putting in six-foot fences and?
Yeah, the fences are an issue.
Yeah. So, that's a concern of mine. Another concern is Mr. Kuser, his issue has to be addressed.
Oh, of course, we're working with him on an ongoing basis.
To his satisfaction. And, Mr. Kuser, I mean, if you show up next city council meeting and you want to talk, I'd like to hear that, you know, it was addressed and you're happy with it. I don't know how far back your yard goes. I saw where it looks like there's an incline, I don't know if you own part of that incline, and how many feet behind that barrier is this actual drainage area, but it has to be addressed to his satisfaction. And now, I'm trying to figure out how would you put a house in a backyard there with what I think is a pretty significant drainage system? I don't know.
Well, John will have to agree with what's going on. The engineers are working with him, a couple of them have been out there to work with him. They're looking for a better way. I mean, a better way so that the land is more usable, not just the water drainage.
And I feel confident that will be worked out. Harrison Toll Drive, are you paying for the extension of that to your neighborhood, or how is that going to be accomplished? And then when would it be?
That's to the VA home?
Yeah.
Yeah, that'll be the SID.
And that will be extended to connect to your neighborhood?
We're talking about that in phase two, if the SID has the money at that time.
You build beautiful homes, those homes there, I'd like to see this development. I just wish we could work something out on this. I just wish we could work something out on this buffer. I, I just wish there was some way, I, I think Mr. Bellinger said, if you go over the twenty-five feet for the whole eighteen yards, or eighteen hundred feet, it's about two acres. You know, I think there's a lot of issues here, who's going to maintain it, who should absorb the cost of it, of buying it. Changes everything you've put together. I don't know how we address that. And, and maybe it's not an issue.
It's a complicated, we've looked at that. It's a complicated thing. It changes the grades and the street layouts, twenty, even twenty, twenty-five or thirty feet. Okay? And so it starts over time when you do that. I thought of the homeowners, so, so who's going to own this, let's say twenty-five feet, and you're absolutely right. So it's owned by somebody, and when the weeds get too high, there are going to be weeds, and the people in the, looking in their backyard are going to be calling them weeds, not natural habitat. Okay, somebody's going to be responsible. There's got to be insurance on it, there's got to be somebody accountable with it.
Right.
For it.
And that's a concern, was when, when it gets to be annexed, who's going to maintain it?
Uh-huh.
And, and stuff, so, but I, I just thought maybe there could be a compromise, and I, I know we had that meeting back November third, and we're here today, so, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
We, we have a question from Councilman Preister on Skype. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. I appreciate the discussion. I am sensitive to the developer and the need for the developer to put the houses in, which I think will greatly benefit Quail Creek and the city of Bellevue. I also appreciate that he's willing to compromise and put in some hedgerows and trees. However, hedgerows may or may not, in a small area, really facilitate wildlife movement, and the trees, as they mature, and you're hearing from a tree person, could actually become problems as they do need to get trimmed, or knocked down, or get old, or struck by lightning, heaven forbid. I appreciate that the neighbors are willing to compromise and reduce the buffer strip from the original hundred feet down to as small as twenty-five feet. I think that's very reasonable. It is less of a buffer than it is a corridor, and if you live in Quail Creek, it's the closest thing to the Fontanel Forest River Bluff area that we have, and people live in that area based on connection to nature and wildlife, and it adds value to the property and to the people who live there. I think that same value will be added to the new Liberty development, and there will be people who will pay more for a lot that has adjoining corridor for wildlife, to see the turkey, to see, I've seen fox in that area, I, I see the pictures of the deer, I know there are deer there. There are some wonderful oak trees there. I think people and animals and nature can coexist, and where they do, both the animals and people are healthier and thrive. So between now and the next council meeting especially, I really wish that we could find a way, come up with a minimum of a twenty-five-foot wildlife corridor to allow that to happen. I'm not sure how the city could participate, but I think Mr. Schuchuck is a very creative planning director, and I think the neighbors are very creative. I think they can look at some of the issues that have been raised. I, I think we can look at this as an opportunity to make the quality of life in that area even better, and I think we, between now and the next meeting, could come up with some alternatives. The issue of maintaining the area is one, but what's growing there now has largely been, I think it's brom grass, from what I remember when I walked through it. It's pretty much straight grass with deep roots that is not that subject to any kind of weed or other infestation, if it's allowed to be natural like it is, which also provides some feed and food source for some of the animals. So without planting trees in it, without putting a lot of other vegetation, I think there's going to be very minimal maintenance, and maybe somehow that could put in, be put in the subdivision agreement, or the adjoining property owners to take some of that responsibility. I think if we get creative, we can find a way to work out the small challenges to two great neighborhoods, one future and one existing, and make this a real asset for the city of Bellevue. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Preister. Are there any more questions for Mr. Moore Legum? See none? Thank you so much.
Thank you. Madam, members of the council, my name is Bob Huck. I live in four oh five Ridgewood Drive in Fontanel Hills, and I believe, I know, and we've lived there about forty-some years, deer and fox and all these wild animals have a way of getting where they want to go, and through the yards, through the forest, obviously, and so on. So I'm sure that they would have, they would not respect any twenty-five feet or twenty feet, or whatever it might be, and they'll find a way. I just wanted to remind you, as we talked about at the planning board, that the purchase agreement with this developer from the city defines the property as so and so and so and so, but it includes Lot B, Outlet B. And then on page two, seller, the city acknowledges that purchaser intends to develop the property into a residential subdivision of detached single-family homes. And again, it says the property is defined above, which of course includes Outlet B. I'm sure you've read your recommendation report from the departments, and by the way, as far as I know, all departments are in favor of approving this rezoning and planning. And the thinking of the planning department anyway, and I, I know they talk with other departments, is the original thought of the, of the outlot was to connect two areas of park ground. That doesn't work anymore. And since the existing outlot will not serve as a connection to future park ground, as once thought, staff is not in favor of keeping it as a buffer between neighborhoods. If the outlot remains undeveloped, it will be difficult to maintain and would not allow street connections. Good planning practice includes connectivity between neighborhoods. Right now, we're showing two streets that will serve both our neighbors to the north as well as this subdivision, which would be really hampered by something of a nature that we've been talking about. Thank you. If there are any questions, I'd be glad to try to answer them.
Are there any questions for Mr. Huck? See none? Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Mr. Hanson? Do you have a question for Mr. Huck?
I do. Um, thank you, Mr. Huck. And it was kind of inferred, there were some title problems with this, as far as the closing on this? Was that something that was going to be addressed by you, or?
I think we've cleared up all the title problems, but you reminded me of something we're still working on, and that's the school districts.
Right.
It's, I think, imperative for the city of Bellevue to have high-end neighborhoods and nice neighborhoods, that people there with children don't have to drive fourteen miles to school in Springfield. Substantial progress has been made on that. We attended a meeting the other day where I believe the state legislature will have a bill introduced very soon to allow the two school districts to make an agreement, and the details of that agreement have pretty much been agreed to, to remove it from Springfield and put it in Bellevue where it belongs. When we first looked at this property, the developer and myself, you look to the left and see a Papillion School, you look to the right and see a Bellevue School, and then to learn that, what? Springfield, fourteen miles away? No, we're not, we're working on that, and we have every reason to believe with the Chamber of Commerce, Health, the city, and our state legislators that we'll get that done.
But this purchase is not contingent on this going into the Bellevue School District?
That's correct. We intend to go ahead and close this month.
Okay.
Trusting in our state legislators and our good governor.
Thanks.
Mm-hmm.
Mr. Huck, I do want to say too that we have personally, I have personally testified on behalf of the redistricting of the school boundary, so we'll continue to work, and so has Larry Burke, he's raising his hand in the back. So we'll continue to support, Senator Crawford is working diligently on that, so we'll follow that through.
Okay, we, we appreciate that very much.
So thank you for your support.
Thank you.
Absolutely. Thank you. Mr. Schuchuck?
I, I don't know if Pat was about to say this, but to answer Mr. Hanson's question, item nine B addresses one of the items that the title company have an issue with.
It's for, uh, first?
The reference to coming up later tonight.
We'll resolve your title problem in about five minutes.
Please.
I'll get this in a second. I'm Steve Arhus, one-two-zero-zero-five Quail Drive. Good evening, Mayor and Councilman. I had planned not to speak tonight, but I can't hold back, so please indulge me if I sound like I'm talking out all sides of my head here, because I tried to write some notes down before I came up here. I'd like to address the things, several things. I'll try to go quickly as I can here. First of all, I'd like to say I do appreciate Denny, I'm not going to try to say his last name, because I know I butcher it. Denny, I appreciate.
Moore Legum.
Everything that they've done, for being future neighbors, they've been great neighbors. I wish I had as many worm fuzzies for how the public process is going as I do for what they've been doing. That being said, I would like to go in and address some of the issues on the planning commission report. This would be report number two, is what I was going off of. One of the things that I find missing in the report was there's, doesn't seem to be any lack, there's a lack of mention of any of the opposition to the plan going forward as it is. We were at the planning commission meeting, this has been a long process, as Carol knows, we've been working on this for several years now. So some of the items on there was like item number nine on the planning commission, this was, these were the, let me see what section this is here, they call this. Pardon me. The analysis, part E, this would be E dot nine, and this is where it discussed the original hundred-foot corridor. One of the reasons that they were saying that we should no longer have the corridors because it will prevent streets from going through, that, to my knowledge, that was never the intent of this corridor in the first place. I think maybe this is a matter of semantics in that we have outlots in our current subdivision, and the roads go through. Now, I look at them now, and they are, yes, different outlots, but our idea was never to prevent the streets from going through by putting this outlot in. The maintenance of the outlot was also in section nine there. I'd like to find out, maybe if the city could find out, how much maintenance they've had to do in the outlots that we have in Quail Creek now, since we've been annexed. I would imagine it's very little. They're natural areas, they stay natural. Of the trees that have fallen down, I know several times, if they blocked the nature trail that we have there now, our own neighbors have taken care of it without having to bother the city about it. That's just kind of how we take care of things. We've been doing it for so many years that we just do that. There was talk about putting a trail into this corridor, and whether we could not put an ADA compliant trail in there. I would say, I don't know that anybody was trying to put an ADA compliant trail in, there is already a trail in there. It's a natural trail formed by the animals and the people that traverse through there. So we're not asking for any new trails to be put in, we're just asking for it to be left natural like it is. To Denny's point about putting a trail in their outlot, I would just see be, be very aware about saying anything like that, because if ADA comes up, you might not be able to have your homeowner association put a trail in there.
We're aware of that.
So just beware. Item number four here. I've been a resident of Bellevue for over fifty years. I've been a resident of Quail Creek for twenty-eight years. I can't give you the specific when this land was bought, but it originally started out being a large regional park with possibly a pool, a, a library, city offices, et cetera. Three years ago, we heard that it was going to be made smaller, and it was going to be a smaller park. It was cut basically in half. A couple of months ago, we heard that it's going to be made even smaller. I have a concern about that, because the new area going in Liberty does not have to put a park in. But yet, I've seen this parkland over the years getting smaller and smaller and smaller. So I have to really wonder, is, will there ever any be, be a park there, and if Liberty doesn't put a park in, we'll have another neighborhood that doesn't have a neighborhood park? That's just my personal observation there. I'd like to recommend, I would like to remind the council that the developer is asking to change from an RS seventy-two to RS seventy-two PUD, which means we're also, already being asked to change the size of the lots and take ten-foot off of the back of every lot for this development. We've got two-hundred-and-ninety-two lots going in, with ten feet being taken off the back of them. It would seem like somewhere we could come in and make this compromise that we're looking for, to get the twenty-five-foot strip we're talking about along the southern edge of Quail Creek.
Excuse me for interrupting, but it's the side lots that they're talking about, not the back part of the lots.
The back lot is included in that request. The request I saw says that PUD allows the back lots to go from thirty-five-foot to twenty-five-foot setbacks. In closing, I guess I would just like to say that the council is here to represent all residents of Bellevue, of which we are now residents of Bellevue. We were absorbed by Bellevue and annexed. But I think the council is also to be representing especially the residents that will be affected by this action. I'd ask that they try to continue as best they can, come up with, or have, find a way for us to make a compromise here and continue what was started four years ago. If we can't come to a compromise, I would respectfully ask that the rezoning from seventy-two to seventy-two PUD be declined, because it seems like we're getting to the point where this is becoming a legal issue. And the council can decline to rezone this from seventy-two to seventy-two PUD. That's all I have for tonight. Thank you for your time, and I'm sorry if it sounded kind of jumbled, I wasn't planning on speaking tonight.
Thank you for speaking.
Can I just say one thing while we? In regards?
Yes, please do so at the microphone.
Yeah, it's Martin Barch again. In regards to Steve's question about the maintenance, in my research of all the documents, I went through all the BOEs, Board of Equalizations, and I only found two instances of maintenance for Quail Creek. Both were for Outlet Bs, and the total sum since 2012 has been five hundred dollars.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Larry Burks. I just want to make a quick observation regarding the buffer zone, regardless of the size that it is. They may want to take an inventory and measure the density of the ash trees with the incoming Emerald Ash Bore, that might add some clarity on what really needs to be done in that barrier, in that buffer zone. If there are a lot of ash trees there, there may needs, they may be looking at a bunch of dead trees in five years. So that may also help provide some direction on what needs to be done in that buffer zone. It was just an observation I wanted to share.
Thank you, Mr. Burks.
My name is Andrea Tomlinson, and I live at one-one-seven-seven-eight Amos Gates Drive. And I am the current president of the Quail Creek Homeowners' Association. And just for the record, I'm in full support of this wildlife corridor that we're trying to establish. But actually, tonight, I'm speaking on behalf of my neighbor who's currently out of town. His name is Johnny Patterson. He lives at one-one-seven-seven-four Amos Gates Drive. He owns the land that is Lot I, which is along the western edge of Quail Creek and includes a portion of the creek. And he emailed me some of his concerns with the additional drainage from the Liberty neighborhood, so I just wanted to bring a few of these issues to your attention and maybe see if we can have them addressed. First of all, he said, in 2011, four times as much water from the Lakewood Villages subdivision was diverted into the Lot I stream. in the Quail Creek subdivision. Secondly, the northwest corner of Quail Creek is on the lower banks of the stream, which means more water will flood the homes there. Third, water storage or retention ponds, who will keep up maintenance on them? If they break, who will fix them? And will it be the city of Bellevue? Four, sewage pump station will flood as in the past before Lakewood Villages subdivision water was diverted to Lot One stream. Question five, who will pay for the flooding of the homes? Will it be the city of Bellevue? And six, who will pay for the additional land erosion that the water will cause to Lot I that will occur because of the additional water runoff from the new neighborhood? And then finally, he has a question. He just says that the large city sewer pipes will be uncovered and will freeze in the winter. And I have, I made a couple additional copies of his questions, so I can leave these with whoever. He does have his cell phone number on here and would love to have some of these things addressed, so.
Thank you, Ms. Tomlinson. If you could leave that with the clerk?
Yes.
Appreciate it. Thank you. Are there others? I'll see none. I'll go ahead and.
Good evening, Mayor, council members. I'm Michael Johnson. I'm at 12009 Quail Drive. I just wanted to say that I'm in support of the Wildlife Corridor. Since I moved in a couple of years ago, as the service brought me here, I've enjoyed the view. I've enjoyed seeing the wildlife for myself and my family. And it's something I want to be able to share to everybody else, so I just want to go and get my input.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson. If you could please sign in. Thank you. Are there others? One more.
My name is Connie Minier. Thank you for listening to me tonight. I have had, been having some laryngitis problems, so hopefully you'll be able to understand me. This is not my normal voice. I have a few questions, comments, whatever. I guess my first thing that comes to mind is, why is it that whenever a developer wants to get active in our area, Quail Creek becomes a target? Why are agreements already in place so easily ignored by whomever, Planning Department, whoever? Were they illegal or invalid to start with for some reason that we don't know about? It seems to me when an agreement is made, a new person or entity entering into the fray can't just change everything. But that seems to be what happens to us over and over again. By the way, just so there's no, if you're not wondering, I am fully in favor of the animal corridor as it is right now. And I do not favor at all connecting Quail Creek to other developments in the area. I see no reason to do it. I've been a resident of Quail Creek for thirty-six years. I seem to be the old lady of the place tonight, anyway. And we've never needed to be connected to anybody before. It's never been a problem. I don't know why it would be a problem in the future. I don't know if the old, the fire department and police department don't like you being alone is in play or not, but to that I would say it's a lame argument. They need to give another key to another gate to the fire department and settle that one. I believe it was determined the last time this all came up that the agreed-on wildlife corridor could be no narrower than it is right now. It was made narrower than it had been. The animals won't use it apparently if it gets too narrow. That was, at the time, we were told an expert was brought in to assess things like that. And I can say from personal experience that since Lakewood was developed, the animal population, certainly around my house, I live on Quail Creek on Quail Drive, is way down. I don't see nearly the animals I used to see at all. There seem to be a lot of rabbits left, occasional fox, occasional coyote, the occasional deer, which we used to be almost overrun with deer. So, I think that not providing for the animals does make a difference each time one of these wild areas is attacked by our developers. And let's see. Since the last time, which was when Lakewood was being developed, this came up, I don't think any resident of Quail Creek has thought, gee, I wish there was a lot more traffic coming by my house. Now, we're supposed to just accept the fact that maybe three-hundred to six-hundred extra cars, at least twice daily, often speeding through our streets, endangering residents, pets, and wildlife, is okay. We're supposed to just turn, turn the other cheek, so to speak. I don't think we should have to do that. I don't think anybody needs access to yet another development through Quail Creek. Let them use Thirty-Sixth Street and get there that way. It's faster, safer. There are not children running around the way there are in a normal neighborhood. Let me see here. I guess basically what I'm asking you to do is not to act on this tonight. It seems to me, from what I've heard tonight, that there are too many questions, that there are things, too much hasn't been settled. And I, as I, I am not part of the group that has been working on this, so I'm just speaking for myself. But it seems to me that even here within the council, there are too many questions. There are too many unanswered, unsolved problems. And I don't think anything needs to be settled tonight, and I don't think it should be.
It won't be. There's a third reading on this in two weeks.
January twenty-fifth is the final reading.
Okay, but I understood from what you said before, Madam Mayor, that we would not be, that it's not an open session, that we would not be able to.
Correct. The public hearing is tonight.
It's tonight. That's right.
But we vote on it in two weeks.
Okay. Well, I don't think action should be taken tonight, anyway. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Councilman Blood, did you have?
No, I just wanted to clarify that. You already did. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak? Please do so.
Hi, my name is Kim Losal, and I had just a couple of quick comments. If you're wondering kind of what the wildlife corridor, if you're wondering about the wildlife corridor, what it would look like, you can take an aerial view and already see a green strip on the south side of Quail Creek, the north side of the new Liberty Neighborhood. It's already there in, like a Google Earth image. It's visible. Wanted to mention that I had a strong sense of deja vu tonight. We moved into our house about twelve years ago when they were about to build Lakewood Villages, and we spoke about trying to keep the trees and the wildlife as much as possible. We spoke about how beautiful, like Mr. Johnson said, Bellevue was, how, you know, homes and neighborhoods and nature seem to be represented well. And Lakewood Villages listened, and they did incorporate a lot of trees into their neighborhood. And it benefits them, and it benefits us, their neighbors, and it also benefits the wildlife. Somebody mentioned tonight about this wildlife corridor was supposed to connect two parks. That's not what I understand. We were talking about connecting two areas of forest to help the animals maintain something of a natural habitat out there. I believe access to nature, even looking out a window, benefits all people. That's it. And I am kind of surprised to be here, because I thought we had worked this out three years ago and we were, we were looking forward to seeing that one-hundred-foot green space and watching wildflowers and grass and the things that are out there. I woke up this morning and the first thing I saw when I looked out in my backyard was about ten deer in the field before dawn crossing quietly through the snow and feel blessed to see things like that. That's it. I am in favor of the green space, wildlife corridor, and thank you for listening tonight. Thank you for your service as council.
Thank you. Are there others?
Hello, my name's Jennifer Carey. I live on, at 4313 Anker Mill Road. I've been a member or a resident of Quail Creek for eighteen years. And I just wanted to be here tonight to let you know that I fully support the wildlife corridor and feel that it is something that would benefit the new neighborhood as well as continue to benefit Quail Creek neighbors. And that it is a reason that many of the people live in the neighborhood and have lived there for so many years. As you have heard tonight from many people, I hope that you will listen to that feedback and hope that we can come to a compromise to continue to coexist with the nature that's in our neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Carey.
Hello, my name is Jody Sherman. I live at 4411 Amos Gates Drive, and I'm here to support also the wildlife corridor, the Outlot B. I stumbled across Quail Creek about ten years ago as a runner and fell in love with it. And when my husband said it was time to move to a bigger home, I knew it had to be there. I think the nature is amazing. I don't think of it as weeds. It's just nature doing its thing. And as a mom of two kids, I love when they get to go out and just see the birds, see all that that they don't normally get to see. So, if everything was paved over. I'm excited for the new neighborhood, though, and I like the idea of growth, but I do like the idea of keeping some of the natural habitat around. Thank you.
Thank you.
I want to jump on the bandwagon. I live at 4207 Bob White Circle. I'm the farthest cul-de-sac into Quail Creek. The deer sealed the deal on that house for me. And if that goes away, I don't have what I bought the house for. So, right now, I stick furthest out into the cornfield in probably the best lot. So, I'd like to keep the wide, the wide space. I'd like to see the deer come back. So, the other issue I have is drainage. Our cul-de-sac has had many instances in the last couple of years of drainage problems and water embasements. And I'd like to know how that's going to be addressed with the new development, because there won't be full access to the creek.
Can I have your name, please?
Lorraine Smith.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Smith.
Thank you.
Are there others? Not a, please do.
Good evening. My name is Elizabeth Walts. I live at 4216 Bob White Circle. I've been on that street for twenty-eight years. I've lived there since 1988. I'm a neighbor of Lorraine. There's ten houses on the circle. We're the southern, one of the southernmost streets and will border the new Liberty Development. When we moved here in 1988, we were told that there would be development in the farmland south of us. And so, we fully have expected it over the last couple of decades. And we're looking forward to having new neighbors. However, we, I think are all in agreement that there is value to preserving green space and wildlife. And I'm adding my voice to the neighbors that have spoken tonight, but I think we're all speaking on behalf of the new neighbors of Liberty Development. I think they will appreciate that we have stuck with this issue over the last several years and tried to preserve what makes our neighborhood really unique and beautiful. When I come home, when I go home tonight, I feel like when I drive through Quail Drive, I am driving on one of the prettiest streets in the neighborhood at every season. And I think this, there is just some value in having space that's beautiful naturally. There's value in having beautiful man-made spaces as well. But I think preserving the natural spaces for ourselves and our new neighbors is something that's worth exploring and fighting for and speaking for tonight. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Walts. Are there others? See none. I'll close the public hearing on this item. The third and final reading will be January twenty-fifth. Mr. Cook.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor, we've had a lot of public input tonight, and we've had a lot of questions. And I would like to ask if staff at our next meeting would come back and provide us answers to those questions. So, if that could be passed down, that someone would probably have to re-listen to the video tonight. But I would like to have some answers and so, and explain and answer those questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Blood.
Actually, on some of those, I know they can be answered this evening. If indeed citizens can stay until after the meeting, I encourage you to stop and talk with staff and get some of those questions answered tonight. Because I think it's important prior to the next meeting that they have this information. There's a lot of emotion tonight, a lot of concerned citizens. I want to get these things taken care of sooner than later. I agree with you, Councilman Cook, but I'd like to see it tonight. Staff's not going to go anywhere if you're going to stick around. And it sounds like the engineer is willing to stick around, answer questions tonight as well. I, I would prefer to move forward with the agenda, because we have an executive session after this. No offense to the citizens or to, but we have a big agenda tonight.
Mr. Cook.
Thank you. My only concern with that is that talking one-on-one, some of these might be legal issues, and we're talking about drainage and erosion. My only concern would be is if, if there's discussion this evening after this meeting, one-on-one or as a group, how do they ever bring that back before us to say, well, I was told this or I was told that?
They will have two weeks to bring it forward. We can do like we always do when we went here, public comment. We can go ahead and amend the rules and allow them to speak again if we choose to do so.
So, you're saying that they would answer the questions at our next meeting? Or you're saying tonight?
I'm saying I'd like to see it tonight. Then they, by answering those questions, it may bring forward even more questions. We wait until the next council meeting. By answering those questions, if it brings forward even more questions, it just drags it out further and further. I just want to see people get some immediate gratification if possible. I'm not disagreeing with you that should additional information be shared in a public forum, but a lot of what they talked about tonight are. forum, but a lot of what they talked about tonight are things that I think we could maybe resolve actually this evening. So we're actually saying the same thing. I'm just asking that some more immediate response be taken.
In regard to the issue with Mr. Kusar's property and the drainage, that is a legal issue that is outside the limitations of the city. We don't have any business getting involved in the middle of that anyway. What drainage issues and what easements and what deals are there is not under our purview or control. Several of the issues that were raised as questions tonight were answered in previous people asking the same questions. I'm not sure what questions that were there that were not answered in this meeting by Mr. Shuchuk or myself. If they are, we can stick around after the meeting to see what those questions are. But those things have all been addressed. The issues of drainage and all those other things. The drainage actually has to be improved as part of this project under the new regulations. There's drainage problems along those creeks. We all know and are aware of those. But then those drainage problems aren't going to go away with this project. But we actually have to, as cities and as developers, put in drainage provisions that actually improve the drainage as opposed to decreasing the drainage. So I heard a lot of drainage issues tonight. And trust me, if I live in your area, I'd be concerned about it, too. I've seen those ditches. But those things are going to be an overall improvement by development as opposed to having a row crop field out there.
Mr. Mudry.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to thank all of you for coming tonight, being involved, loving your neighborhood and being passionate about it. That's what we need to hear, citizen involvement. And so, thank you very much for coming. Appreciate it.
Thank you. So we have two weeks till the final hearing, and hopefully that's enough time to work some of these issues out. January 25th, again, is the third reading. Mr. Kusar, did you have your hand? We're good. Okay. Thank you. We need to move on to item number nine on the agenda, please. Ordinance for introduction, first reading, 9A, ordinance 3838. Sabrina, please read the ordinance.
Ordinance number 3838. An ordinance to amend section 2-30 of the Bellevue Municipal Code pertaining to the City Council's Order of Business to repeal such section as heretofore existing and to provide for the effective date of this ordinance.
Thank you. The second reading and public hearing on this item will be January the 25th. 9B, ordinance 3839. Sabrina, please read the ordinance.
Ordinance number 3839. An ordinance declaring the necessity, expediency, and propriety of vacating the plating of Lot 2, Daniel's Farm Edition, Sarpy County, Nebraska, now heretofore vacated, repealing all ordinances and all parts of ordinances in conflict herewith, and designating an effective date.
Thank you. The staff request the statutory rule requiring reading on three different days be suspended and the vote be taken after the public hearing is held at this meeting.
Let me discuss this a little bit.
Yes. Mr. Sullivan.
In regard to the previous discussions we had in the public hearing on a title issue, this is the title issue that we're trying to resolve. If you recall, when we initially looked at these purchases, it was going to be Lot 1 and Outlots A and B. Because of some access issues and some other alignment issues, and in addition requesting that the developer purchase that little piece, probably about three acres in the northeast corner, portions of Lot 2 needed to be purchased as well. The difficulty is from two phases. One is the city... Or I'm sorry, when you go to sell a lot or lots, you can't just arbitrarily break those lots in different parcels. You would have to either go through a replating process or remove those lots, in a sense. The replating process isn't really going to work well for us from the standpoint of this is going to be a phased development. Parts of Lot 2 will probably be developed at different times. So what we actually did is kind of reverted back to meets and bounds legal description. So what happens is when we vacate the plat as it relates to Lot 2, Lot 2 is not going to exist anymore. It is just going to be a meets and bounds legal description. In doing so, when we're selling a part of Lot 2, we're selling a little over 12 acres of that lot that's remaining, that the old Lot 2, for lack of a better term, it is a... When we sell off 12 acres, we're still going to have more than an additional 10 acres of remaining lot. So we comply with subdivision regulations that say if you take a large parcel and you break it into smaller pieces, as long as none of the smaller pieces are smaller than 10 acres, then you can go ahead and sell those by meets and bounds and not have to... And you're not in violation of any subdivision rules or regulations. So literally what we're doing is we're just kind of putting the ground back, in a sense, into farmland-type legal description so that we're able to transfer those 12 acres, that part of Lot 2 that had about 12 acres. And that's the process. We're actually just stepping back in the plating process and removing it so that we can properly transfer title to them. And then as they proceed forward and as they plat lots, that portion of Lot 2 will then become replatted again later. So, long story short, it's complete form over substance. Nothing's really happening here, other than we're going through some legal jumbo to be able to pass proper title. And we'd like to get that done. It's really an administrative function. We're not really creating any legislative function. But the statute does say that you have to do it by ordinance. So I'm requesting that you do it tonight without going through the process of the waiver of the three readings and so forth, or going through the three readings to otherwise waive those.
Thank you, Mr. Sullivan. Are there any questions for Mr. Sullivan? I believe I need a motion. Do I need a motion to waive the three readings?
I'll make a motion to go ahead and request the statutory requiring the three readings be suspended and the vote be taken at a public hearing at this meeting.
Have a second? Motion fails.
Let me also state that, just to be advised, we also have on our agenda an issue called bonds, in which they're supposed to be paid, that are tentative on this matter. Whether... I guess I'm a little confused as to why this is an issue. As we do need to proceed on this, it is not going to change the circumstance of when title gets passed, other than it's going to delay title. It has nothing to do with the plat.
So we still have a motion on the floor? We need a second. Councilman Blood?
I'll second.
Thank you. Any discussion? CNN, please vote.
Vote is four to one.
Thank you. We'll not open for a public hearing on this item. Anyone wishing to speak on this item, please do so at this time.
Tom Bellinger, 12006 Quail Drive. Just a clarification on this. Does this mean that the...
Could I interrupt you for a minute? We didn't have the requisite votes. It did not pass.
We need a supermajority.
Yep. Sorry.
So we have no public hearing?
Next week or two weeks?
Yes. Thank you. On the 25th. Move on to item number C, ordinance 3840. Sabrina, please read the ordinance.
Ordinance number 3840. An ordinance to amend section 5.28, ordinance number 3619, Bellevue zoning ordinance relating to fences. To repeal such section as heretofore existing, to provide an effective date of the ordinance, and to provide for the publication of this ordinance in pamphlet form.
Thank you. The second reading and public hearing, January 25th. 9D, Sabrina, please read the ordinance on 3841.
Ordinance number 3841. An ordinance to amend the official zoning map of the city of Bellevue, Nebraska, as provided for by Article 3 of ordinance number 3619, by changing the zone classification of land located at 12701 South 28th Avenue, more particularly described in section 1 of the ordinance, and to provide an effective date.
Thank you. The second reading and public hearing, January 25th. 9E, ordinance number 3842. Sabrina, please read the ordinance.
Ordinance number 3842. An ordinance to amend the official zoning map of the city of Bellevue, Nebraska, as provided for by Article 3 of ordinance number 3619, by changing the zone classification of land located at 12701 South 28th Avenue, more particularly described in section 1 of the ordinance, and to provide an effective date.
Thank you. The second reading and public hearing, also, January 25th. 9E, ordinance number 3842. Sabrina, please read the ordinance.
Ordinance number 3842. An ordinance to amend the official zoning map of the city of Bellevue, Nebraska, as provided for by Article 3 of ordinance number 3619, by changing the zone classification of land located at 12709 South 28th Avenue, more particularly described in section 1 of the ordinance, and to provide an effective date.
Thank you. The second reading and public hearing on this item, also, January 25th. 9E, ordinance number 3842. Sabrina, please read the ordinance.
Ordinance number 3842. An ordinance to amend the official zoning map of the city of Bellevue, Nebraska, as provided for by Article 3 of ordinance number 3619, by changing the zone classification of land located at 12709 South 28th Avenue, more particularly described in section 1 of the ordinance, and to provide an effective date.
Thank you. Second reading, public hearing, also, on January 25th. Item 10, public hearing on matters other than ordinance. We have none. 11, resolution. 11A, resolution 2016-01, calling Bellevue Municipal Building Corporation Lease Purchase Bond Series 2008A taxable interest bonds in the amount of $575,000. And Lease Purchase Bond Series 2008B tax-exempt interest bonds in the amount of $960,000 for payment. Mr. Sullivan?
Based on the failure to proceed on the vacation of...
I think your mic's not working.
Based on the failure to proceed forward on the vacation of Lot 5, I don't see any reason to pass this, as we will not have any funds to be able to pay these. I would suggest that we continue this for two weeks in the event that we have some resolution in two weeks. So I would make a motion to postpone.
Mr. Cook.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll make a motion to postpone.
Second.
Second by Councilman Blood. Any discussion?
To next, to two weeks.
January 25th.
To our next meeting.
Please vote.
All vote yes.
Thank you. 12, current business. 12A is under consent. 12B acknowledged the nomination for appointment of John Hanson, Steve Carmichael to the annexation committee and Steve Carmichael to the ordinance committee. Councilman Blood.
Yes, Mayor. I ask that 12B be put on the agenda, not because of the annexation committee, but because of the ordinance committee. The ordinance committee was originally formed because when we came onto the council in 2008, there was so much in our books, as far as ordinances go, that needed to be corrected, changed, updated. It was ridiculous how much needed to be changed. In the last year and a half especially, it's been clear to me at least, and we've only had a brief discussion about it, but we were planning on bringing this forward or the consideration of the council. But it's been pretty obvious to me at least that the role has changed and that it's really one of the committees, as we've eliminated committees along the way because we have made so many really good improvements, that this may be one of the committees that really doesn't need to exist anymore. And so, perhaps Councilman Preister will want to chime in on this one, since he's one of the other council people that's on the ordinance committee. Originally, we were writing a lot of new ordinances and updating a lot of the new ordinances. It was a whole new council in 2008. And we wanted to see some changes for the better that we did make. But again, in the last year and a half especially, it's been very clear that what we're looking at is very different than what we're looking at six years ago. And we... It doesn't change the procedure. We'd still be able to bring forward ordinances. We would still have staff looking at it. But really, everybody's capable of doing it on their own and they're just... It just seems like an extra step that seems to frustrate also some of the other council members. And so, I would ask that we perhaps put that portion of the nomination off for two weeks, just so we could discuss, have time to discuss it amongst ourselves and decide if indeed we do want to keep the ordinance committee. When Mayor Mixon was present, anytime you wanted to do anything on the council, he'd insist that we form a committee. And that's why for years, we had like 13 committees, I think. It was pretty ridiculous. And we've been able to reduce a lot of them, make some of them... I think they're called a... What do we call them when they're not committees?
Task force.
Task force. And I think this is one of them that may need to either have its definition changed or just be eliminated.
Mr. Cook.
I don't understand the need to delay. If you bring it back at a later date and we decide to eliminate it or put it in someone else's responsibility.
Well, we don't have the elimination of this committee on the agenda.
Well, we're just adding a member.
Which if in two weeks you eliminated, that would be... I'm trying to be courteous. So you want to act on it tonight, I have no issue with that. But I just wanted to let you know that that was something that was discussed and like many of our other committees that have been taken off the rosters, this may very well be one that needs to happen as well.
Mr. Carmichael.
Thank you, Mayor. I prefer to see what the rest of the council wants. I think it's a very important position, especially in light of an election coming up and individuals coming on the council that may not have the ability to understand the subtle nuances of the ordinances that are being talked about. So I think it's a very important position, Carol, to be quite honest with you.
Could you be more specific when you say subtle nuances? I'm confused. Because all the ordinance committee's job is, is when somebody brings something forward that's on the council...
Evaluate performant content.
Right.
Yes.
But that staff is also able to do that. The reason that we formed the committee is because there were so many changes that needed to be made at the time when we came onto the council that we were trying to alleviate that stress from the staff. So I have no issue with that. I didn't plan on discussing whether the committee should or should not exist tonight. I was going to let you know that that is our recommendation. I've heard from other council members, and you being one of them, that it slows the process down. I hear frustration. You don't always necessarily like the input that's shared by the ordinance committee, which is fine, because you don't have to accept that either. But it is something that we have discussed. And I have no issue with having Councilman Carmichael on the committee. That's not the issue. The issue is, is this yet one more committee that we don't necessarily need? And again, the purpose for the ordinance committee initially was because we did have so much legislation that was changed. And we're not even doing 5% of what happened the first four years I was on the council. It severely slowed down as far as council bringing things forward. So I'm not disagreeing with you. I'm just telling you that that's something that we had discussed and that we were going to bring forward. And then I saw this on the agenda. And I wanted to be very honest with you, as opposed to you getting elected onto that committee and saying, "No, we want to shut it down." So it's not anything personal.
Is that would be fine?
Pardon?
Then neither rises up to greater.
Okay. So it wouldn't have been anything personal. It's just to let you know that this is something that we've discussed, because we want to make sure that we reduce the amount of committees as much as possible. We've discussed that before, too. And again, I don't know if Councilman Preister wants to wave his hand and wants to say something? Okay.
Mr. Preister.
Thank you, Mayor. I would just add that, as I recall, when former council members introduced and passed establishing this committee, that some council members at that time had the idea that having this committee would prevent things from even being introduced. Now, it should never do that. No committee should prevent any council member from introducing anything that they want, good, bad, ridiculous, or whatever. So the purpose of the committee should not be to prevent legislation from coming forward as some originally intended. The whole idea was to help screen. That role, I think, really should be done with our legal department, because they have the most legal experience of anyone on the council or of us on the committee. So that and any other staff input is going to be done anyway and should be done. So I would tend to agree. It's a committee that doesn't really have a purpose. And when it was originally established, it was only geared at ordinances that were introduced by council members. It was never about anything introduced by any staff, by legal, by the mayor, or anyone else. And we have basically followed that. Only council members. So if we don't trust ourselves, if we can't introduce good things and have it go through the process, then somehow I think we're failing the system. So I think we should have the discussion further. But that was some people's original purpose in doing it. And I have said from the beginning, no one council member should have the authority to prevent anything from being introduced. You have the discussion. You voted up or down. You move on. But every single council member is elected to move forward what they think is in the best interest of the city and their direct ward constituents. Thank you.
You have a motion?
I'll make a motion. I appreciate what our council members are saying tonight. I think we need to review all of our task force and committees and probably make some significant changes. I think that could take months. I think the ordinance committee has brought forward a lot of material. I think almost every agenda we have, you know, it goes through the ordinance committee. I just think it's, you know, maybe I don't understand it, the whole process of what, because I'm not on it. But it just seems like it is a valuable tool. Now, maybe down the road, if we need to, you know, get rid of it and maybe transfer the responsibility on someone else, you know, I could support that too. But I think just from today moving forward, I'll make a motion to approve the acknowledgement of the nominations for appointment of John Hanson and Steve Carmichael to the annexation committee and Steve Carmichael to the ordinance committee.
Second.
Second by Mr. Modery. Any discussion? See none, please vote.
All voted yes.
Thank you. Item C, recommendation to Sarpy County Board regarding the request to vacate a portion of 19th Street and Child's Estate acres. Mr. Carmichael.
Make a motion to recommend, to approve the recommendation of Sarpy County Board regarding a request to vacate a portion of 19th Street and Child's Estate acres.
Second.
Second by Councilman Blood. Any discussion? See none, please vote.
All voted yes.
Thank you. 12D, approval of an authorization for the mayor to sign CDBG subrecipient agreement with the Sarpy County Museum for 2015 CDBG funding in the amount of $31,000. And Abby Hyland is here if you have any questions. Councilman Blood.
Motion to approve and authorize the mayor to sign the CDBG subrecipient agreement with the Sarpy County Museum for the 2015 CDBG funding in the amount of $31,500.
Second.
Second by Mr. Carmichael. Any discussion? See none, please vote.
All voted yes.
Thank you. 12E, approval of and authorization for the mayor to sign CDBG subrecipient agreement with Rebuilding Together Omaha for 2015 CDBG funding in the amount of $100,000. Mr. Carmichael.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to make a motion for approval of the authorization for the mayor to sign the CDBG subrecipient agreement with Rebuilding Together Omaha for 2015 CDBG funding in the amount of $100,000.
Second.
Second by Councilman Blood. Any discussion? See none, please vote.
All voted yes.
Thank you. 12F, approval of an authorization for the mayor to sign CDBG subrecipient agreement with Hike Business Park for 2015 CDBG funding in the amount of $50,000. Mr. Carmichael.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to make a motion for approval of the authorization for the mayor to sign the CDBG subrecipient agreement with Hike Business Park for 2015 CDBG funding in the amount of $50,000.
Second.
Second by Councilman Blood. Any discussion? See none, please vote.
All voted yes.
Thank you. 12G, approve amendments to the CBDG commercial program guidelines. Councilman Blood.
Yes, Mayor. I'd like to make a motion that we approve the amendments to the CDBG commercial program guidelines as is included in our packet.
Second. Second by Mr. Cook. Any discussion? Mr. Modery.
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, I have a few questions. Abby, maybe you can...
We'll ask Ms. Hyland, please to step forward.
In here, it has listed maximum funding of $20,000. I assume that's per project or per applicant?
Yes, sir.
Okay. In the part having to do with the facade grant program, again, on the funding, it talks about 50% of the city assistance in the form of a grant and 50% in the form of a loan. And then the 20,000. So is the 20,000 an aggregate between the loan and the grant or...
Correct. So if they took the full 20,000, 10,000 would be the loan and 10,000 would be a grant.
Okay. All right. I don't know if we need to clarify that in here or not, but that's fine. And then in part D on the program administration, we're changing the makeup of the Commercial Rehabilitation Advisory Committee, take away a city council representative and take away a citizen representative. What's the rationale? Why are we doing that?
The committee so far has met once in five years. We have our finance director. CDBG specialist would act as an advisory position, the city administrator. I think that they would be able to act on behalf of the council in what this program is supposed to be accomplishing. We can add those positions back, but because of the lack of need right now, I would say that the three positions that are appointed would be sufficient.
Okay. How does this differ or work in conjunction with the CDBG review committee?
This would be separate. This money currently is from revolving loan funds. This program was in 2009, 2010.
Right.
Loaned out about three loans to businesses in Old Town. That money is being paid back. And as that money is being paid back, we can reloan it out to businesses that are in, that meet the eligibility requirements. So right now, it's just a revolving loan. No new money is going in as far as entitlement CDBG money.
Okay. So no entitlement money feeds it? All right. Thank you.
All right.
Are there any other questions? Thank you, Abby.
All right. Thank you.
So we have a motion and a second. We need any other discussion? Please vote.
All voted yes.
Thank you. 12H, approval and ratification of the tentative collective bargaining agreement between the city of Bellevue and Bellevue Police Command Staff Association, BPCSA. Councilman Blood.
Motion to approve and ratify the tentative collective bargaining agreement between the city of Bellevue and the Bellevue Police Command Staff Association.
Second.
Second by Mr. Carmichael. Any discussion? See none, please vote.
All voted yes.
Thank you. 12I, appointment of ad hoc committee to oversee and make recommendations of the Champion Village. Councilman Blood.
Motion to approve an appointment of an ad hoc committee to oversee and make recommendations on Champion's Village.
Second.
Second by Mr. Carmichael. Any discussion? Mr. Sullivan.
I think we're going to need to have you appoint who those people are for that.
Needs to be added into the motion?
Well, I guess what I would do is have you list those individuals that are going to be on that committee. I can give you some of the recommendations just from what it's had and maybe give some background on this a little bit. I've met with Doug...
Hill?
Losing my mind. Doug Hill and Paul Hartnett in regard to some issues on some improvements they would like to make to the place as well as the ongoing future of the facility. We have a lease through this coming year. But obviously, we need to have a long-term plan, whether that's with the current tenant or whether it is to move in another direction. When I met with them, Councilman Hanson was also with me. I know that he's had some discussions with Councilman Carmichael as well as Councilman Modery. They're kind of aware of what's going on. I think we're kind of under a little window where we need to move quickly as they need to make decisions on what improvements, if they're going to make at all. So from that standpoint, I think that from a council side, as many as those three people could be introduced, but it's still your choice. I think the city administrator needs to be involved in that process. And there has been continued discussion with respect to parks being involved with the process and how they can potentially use the fields down there. So I think it would be good to have Jim Shada on that committee as well. Or if Jim would have somebody from his department as, for lack of a better term, nominee to sit in for him. But I do know that this is kind of a fast-moving target, even though it doesn't seem that way. They, as in the current tenants, need to make some decisions that weighs on what we're doing. And from a future aspect of where we're going, we need to... It's more, what I want to say, urgent than what would appear on its face.
Councilman Blood.
Pat, I don't disagree that it's urgent. All I ask is, is it so urgent that we couldn't bring the names forward in two weeks on the agenda for the next council meeting? Instead of just kind of like rushing through to tonight?
Well, I think the thing really kind of needs to be done right away. I seriously think that there... I've already had some meetings and John has already had some meetings with them. Time is really of the essence, particularly with some of the decisions they have to make with respect to ordering supplies and other issues. And so I think we need to strike now and move things forward.
Can we just not amend the motion to say that we approve it and that the legal department, administration, can select whom they feel would be most appropriate for the committee? I was listing people randomly right now and I'm just not comfortable with that. Just kind of like throwing some names in a hat here and...
Or we could ask for who would like to be involved.
But you're also, he's also talking about other people like Mr. Shada and...
Well, the only thing I can say with Mr. Shada is he is an employee of the city. So if we tell him to be on a committee, he should sit on a committee.
Well, and it's the same with council too. I mean, we're all, we're employed, we're employees as well.
No, I understand that.
Why do we need to say the names? Why don't we just say, "Go ahead with the committee and you guys handle it." And if you want council input, invite the council members that want to participate. It's not going to be a form.
I suppose you could do it that way.
Yeah, we could do it informal that way. If you're going to do it as a true ad hoc committee, currently, we have as a council policy, policy 17, that refers to ad hoc committees, which says the members are pointed by the mayor. So if you're going to do it informal, we can do it that way. But if you're going to do truly an ad hoc committee a formal way, then it would be, need to be a mayoral appointment with council approval.
And then those council members that are interested would let the mayor know and the mayor can go ahead and appoint the other committees and members. I mean, that's, that's...
Probably should.
You disagree with me too. But I just, I'm not comfortable we start pulling in names and open...
Well, I guess my thought is is you can approve having this ad hoc committee and then as part of that same agenda item, if the mayor's comfortable, just go ahead and appoint them now and then have you make a motion to approve those.
So would I be appointing...
I think we really need to move on this. I'm not...
I'm not disagreeing. I'm just saying I don't understand the purpose of having the names when it's ad hoc.
So we already have on the committee Dan Burlowitz, Pat Sullivan, and Jim Shada by way of...
I will be there in advisory capacity. I don't necessarily want to be so much in a policy position on that. But yes.
And do we have others that would like to be on the committee?
I would.
Mr. Carmichael. Mr. Hanson. Councilman Blood. So we have, Dan Burlitz will oversee.
Well, I'll be a member.
Pat Sullivan, you'll help us with our legal. Jim Shada as an employee. Mr. Carmichael, Mr. Hanson, and Mr. Modery. We have that in a motion.
I add that to my original motion.
And I would reiterate that with my second.
Thank you, Mr. Carmichael. Any other discussion? See none, please vote.
All voted yes.
Thank you. Item number 13, city administrator's report. Mr. Burlowitz.
Yeah, the only thing I'd start off, as council members are aware, on the 14th of this month, which is Thursday, we will have the annual city management, city council strategic planning session. That would be held at the Fire Training Center from 8:30 to 4:30 approximately. That is a public meeting, so it is open to the public for those who would wish to attend that. And we'll answer any questions that may have on the rest of the report.
Are there any questions from the council? See none, thank you. We'll move on to item number 14, public request to be heard. Any members of the public addressing the council shall abide by Council Policy Resolution Number 35 regarding the principles of conduct and decorum, which states any statement made during the city council meeting, the mayor, or the city council, city officials, and employees, or members of the general public shall not involve personal, impertinent, or slanderous attacks on individuals regardless of whether the individual so attacked is an elected official, a city official, or an employee, or member of the general public. And section, city section code 2-68 regarding the manner of addressing the council, copies of the aforementioned rules are posted outside the council chambers. Speakers shall limit their presentation to five minutes. Are there any?
Good evening. Chuck Frederick, 1511 Madison Street. I hope everybody had a nice holiday. I was going to talk five minutes and ask for five minutes more, but I'm going to not do that. I'll wait till next meeting for three reasons. One, my pen ran out of ink, so all the things I'm going to write down. The football game is on coming, and I'm sure people want to see that. And because the meeting was a little bit longer this time than I anticipated, I do want to thank the park department, because, like I said before, I take my dog down to Jewel Park, and they put some wood chips down there when it was wet, and that really helps a lot. So, I think they're doing a good job, at least in the small animal park department side of it. And so I appreciate that. I know the other people that take their dogs down there appreciate it too. The other thing is that I've heard Paul Harvey speak on police and the respect for police, and he did this October 15th, 2009. Now, most of you know Paul Harvey, you know all of him, and heard, probably listened to him. A lot of younger people probably haven't. But you can Google up Paul Harvey and police, and you can listen to his, what he said, his presentation. If I had my way, I would have every adult in the country listen to that presentation every month, once a month. I'd have every student in high school, college, and, and grade school listen to that presentation once a week, and I'd have President Obama listen to it every day. We, we've lost the respect for police, and what he said in 2009 is only worse now, and it's a shame, because that's not the way it should be. You can look at my website, chuckfrederick.com. You'll see I wrote about it. You can look at the web. I don't have the audit, audit on, or the audio on there, but you can look it up yourself. But I just recommend you look at my website, chuckfrederick.com. And I will wait till two weeks from today and talk a little bit longer at that point. Thank you very much.
Please.
Mr. Sullivan, was that the Cat Osterman complex you were talking about just a little bit ago?
Correct.
Andy Cootnella, once again. Big entrepreneur plans for me. I got, I want a $10 million water park here. I want a whole bunch of stuff in this. To save that dying animal, as I'll use that. I've thought about a premier soccer complex, indoor ice rink out there. I mean, I've got huge dreams. I just, several ideas for you guys, since you're getting into the, maybe how to save this thing. Perhaps you can take, take a peek at that. Super huge indoor/outdoor complex for the soccer people. Ice arena. I'm a hockey player from Minnesota. We don't have that facility anywhere nearby us, and the lack of sheets of ice around here could be a moneymaker. So there's other things that we could do. Costs money, of course. But just want to throw some ideas at you guys as you go forward with that, with that project. Thank you.
Are there others? See none. I'll close the public hearing. Our public request to be heard. We move on to item number 15, executive session. Councilwoman Blood.
Yes, Mayor, for the protection of the public interest and for the prevention of needless injury to the reputation of an individual, I move to go into executive session to discuss lease negotiations on the 1500 Wall Street location, and real estate negotiation on lots 4 and 5, Daniel's Farm.
Second.
Second by Mr. Carmichael. Any discussion? See none, please vote.
All voted yes.
Thank you. It is now 8:30. We will go into executive discussion, session, where our discussion will be restricted to a stated by Councilwoman Blood. Thank you.